Meeting of the Here Commission to order at 6:30, um, 2 P. M. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Lucy Hakobian.
Thank you, Chair Nunez. If I can please have you put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the.
Of the United States.
Of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation under God. Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lucy. Danielle, please call the vote.
Chair Jennings Nunez?
Here.
I, Chair Herrera. Absent, Commissioner Borja?
Here.
Commissioner Bren-Hall?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Commissioner Goto? Absent, and Commissioner Khan?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Does everyone had a moment to look over the agenda order?
Yes. Yes.
Any objections to the agenda order?
Nope.
Thank you. Here none. The agenda order is approved. We're going to move on now to approval of the minutes from May 27th. If you've had a chance to review them, is there a motion or can I get a motion to approve the minutes of May 27?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 27.
I second that.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Commissioner Borja and seconded by Commissioner Khan. Danielle, please take the vote.
Commissioner Borja?
Aye.
Commissioner Bren-Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Goto? Absent. Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Chair Jennings Nunez?
Aye.
And by Chair Herrera? Absent. Motion passed by a vote of five ayes and zero nays.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platform. Please email all public comments to Matthew Morales Stevens, emoralistevins@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the commission tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the commission after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive commission agendas, please email your request to emoralistevins@sgch.org.
Thank you, Matthew. So this is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Here Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda, as well as on items two through four who are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Here Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Here Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. Matthew, do we have any public comments for tonight's meeting?
No public comments tonight.
Thank you. So, agenda item number two, uh, social media and the Brown Act presentation. Norma Tavarez previously joined us during the April 28th meeting, the special commission meeting to discuss the Brown Act. Ms. Tavarez is going to be with us again tonight to provide some clarification and additional details on the use of social media as it relates to the Brown Act. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Chair Jennings. It's nice to see everybody again. Thank you for being here. So, yeah, in terms of our purpose for our presentation tonight, it is to provide information to help you as commissioners navigate your use of social media in your role as commissioners with regard to its intersections with California's transparency laws, namely the Brown Act, but also the Public Records Act, as well as some First Amendment considerations. Next slide, please. And one more. So when we're talking about social media, we're really referring to virtually all digital platforms. So the, what comes to mind would be things like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, but we're also referring to blogs, forums, chat rooms, et cetera. So it's pretty expansive definition. And I just want to start by acknowledging the many benefits of social media, including the ability to quickly and economically share out information, engage with the public, reaching a wider audience, and meeting residents where they are, given that social media is the modern public forum. Next slide. Having said that, as public officials, using social media also brings with it some potential challenges. So the challenges that all individuals face with regard to internet memory and mistakes being identified and people feeling courageous behind a keyboard. But in addition, as public officials, concerns about blurring lines between what's public and private, the fact that the public's right to participate brings with it the right to criticize. And so, and then the other legal issues that I've already highlighted. And just recognizing that some areas of the law remain unsettled. So it's not always clear how old laws apply to new platforms. Many of these situations are fact-specific, and so it's not always possible to anticipate every hypothetical. So our goal for today is for you just to be aware, have a sense of what the key issues that might arise and what those general guardrails are that have, based on current law and cases that have come before the courts. Next slide. So we're going to start with social media and the Brown Act. Some of these things will be familiar to you. Next slide. As you probably recall, the general principle or general rule with the Brown Act is that all meetings shall be open in public. Government bodies should deliberate and take action in the public's eye. And the republic has a right to access and to participate in all meetings, which gives rise to notice requirements so that the public can assert those rights. And in addition, the Brown Act requires that only matters that have been agendized and noticed should be discussed or taken action on. Next slide. The Brown Act has a broad definition of a meeting. The basic rule is that the Brown Act applies to all meetings of local legislative bodies. And so anytime that there's a gathering of the majority or quorum of the members and it involves any aspect of the decision-making process that's within that body's jurisdiction, then the Brown Act open meeting requirements will be triggered. And again, this information should all sound familiar to you. Next slide. If you recall, there's, the concept of meetings does not just mean in one setting, in a physical setting, but it also includes the use of a series of communications that leads to discussing or deliberating. And I'm giving you all this background because it is going to come to bear when we start looking at the laws that address social media specifically. And so the reason, the rationale behind this prohibition on serial meetings is that it deprives the public of the right to access and participate. And just note from the definition of meeting that, again, it's not limited to physical congregation of a majority of members. So it begs the question whether the rules and prohibitions also apply to online congregation. Next slide. So again, rules are applicable that apply in the physical realm also apply to the digital realm. So we want to keep those same basic principles in mind. So even a series of online messages can lead to collective concurrence, you know, thinking back to those serial prohibited serial meetings, right? And so that there's greater risk of inadvertent Brown Act violations due to the rapid speed by which people can communicate via social media platforms and the ease of interactivity among users. Next slide. So the legislature passed Assembly Bill 992. It temporarily amends the Brown Act to address social media. And it sunsets on January, well, December 31, 2025. And AB 992 clarifies permissible social media used by public officials. It has a very broad definition of what constitutes social media to include just about everything. And it says that public officials may communicate for the purpose of answering questions, providing information, soliciting information from the public with regard to matters pertinent to that body. It also clarifies that the public cannot be blocked from the platform. Only the platform itself can block an individual based on protocol or rule violation. Next slide. AB 992 also has Thou Shall Nots. It says that public officials may not discuss among themselves on social media platforms business. Again, there's always that narrowing language which is related to business of the body. So we're not talking about somebody's wedding or kid or purely personal matters. We're talking about matters that involve business related to legislative body. And so it says that public officials cannot even respond directly to communication made by another public official. And so by responding, they mean things like liking, sharing, commenting, just about anything, including the use of digital icons. So it's a pretty vast prohibition. So in, in the physical realm, maybe a single contact between two officials would not normally constitute a prohibited meeting, provided that it doesn't constitute a quorum. However, AB 992 prohibits such interactions entirely. So again, just being mindful of unlawful serial meetings being triggered as a result of these, these types of responses toward each other. So you're encouraged to give careful thought when engaging in social media interactions that involve the commission's business, as well as reacting to fellow commissioners on, in online platforms. And so while AB 992 helps us clarify what's permissible, it also raises questions about what may or may not be subject to the California Public Records Act. Next slide, please. So moving on to the Public Records Act. Next slide. Yes, again, there's, there are sort of these fundamental principles that you want to keep in mind. And it, in terms of the Public Records Act, that general principle is disclosure. So government records shall be disclosed to the public upon request unless there's a specific exception that might apply, which would be a reason not to disclose. But the, but the general policy always favors disclosure, disclosure of records. And so the legislature has declared that access to information concerning the people's business is fundamental and necessary, is a fundamental and necessary right of every person in the state. Next slide. And you know, just like we said, well, what's a meeting? Well, the question becomes, well, what's a record? And again, it's very broad and encompasses just about everything. But keep in mind that includes everything related to the city's business or the agency's business. But it's regardless of physical form or characteristics. So those are the really key words when it comes to social media. Next slide. Because then the question is, well, is social media covered? And the answer is essentially yes. Content that is produced includes anything that relates to the conduct of government. And so what constitutes a record is really content-based, not platform-based. So that's something that we want to keep in mind, that even content that's on social media would be covered by the Public Records Act. Next slide. You know, as you may recall, from, from last time, we addressed the question of personal accounts and devices. So the key case here is the San Jose case where the courts, the court held that public officials' private that their private email accounts and personal accounts may be subject to the act. And so that raises an obligation that officials might be required to search for responsive records on their private accounts and devices. So this was a seminal case because it basically says, well, you can't hide behind your personal accounts and devices and conduct cities' business elsewhere. You know, even that would be subject to disclosure. Next slide. So what does that mean for personal social media accounts? You know, the things that you want to consider for your own accounts would be, well, how am I using it? Is it for purely personal or business use? Am I wearing an official capacity hat? Does it have an official purpose? What am I posting about? You know, these are the kinds of questions that you want to be mindful, mindful of. And if in fact you are blurring those lines and it's crossing into a public account, then that may give rise to some retention questions about those posts. So in regards to an official digital communication, there may be some requirements about retaining those documents. So the general rule would be don't hide or delete posts that are related to commission business. Next slide. Another important thing to consider is issues related to free speech and the First Amendment. Next slide. The social media really is the modern public forum. It raises issues that I won't get into with regard to levels of scrutiny when these cases come before the courts. But just recognize that online speech is essentially the same as the town square. Next slide. And speech is protected. So these, this is a gray area where boundaries are currently being tested in litigation. But there is case law that has determined that liking is speech and symbolic expression that's fully protected by the First Amendment. Offensive, obnoxious, even hateful speech and anonymous speech is also protected. Criticism of the government has been deemed protected speech. And so what that means is that public officials cannot prohibit comments based on viewpoint-specific or those that might be critical of the agency. Next slide. The key case here is Knight First Amendment Institute versus Trump. And here, we had seven individuals that tweeted a critical message in reply to a tweet, and they were blocked. So the court held that by holding out his Twitter account as an avenue for public engagement and using it in an administrative capacity, that the president made the account a designated public forum. And so the question before the court was, you know, can a public official block a person for their account in response to views that that person has expressed? And the court said no. You cannot block speakers from accessing a designated public forum. Next slide. So you're probably wondering, is my account public forum? So again, it depends on its use. So do you, you know, ask yourself some of these questions? You know, in it, are you identifying yourself as a commissioner? Are you using it to address the community? You know, what information are you sharing? What are you posting? You know, does it have the spirit of being official business? And so I think last time we had advised each of you to create separate official accounts. And so, you know, that's certainly something that is the more conservative approach so that you can avoid blurring those lines. And keep in mind that the court in Knight did acknowledge that while the former president's account was private before the election, it could be private again once that person leaves office. So to the extent you're using a single account and it may be treated as a public account for a limited purpose, it doesn't mean that that same account cannot, you know, quote unquote, be deemed private in the future. Next slide. You're probably wondering about privacy. Well, you know, if it's a private account, what about my privacy? And essentially, courts have landed on the basic premise that no reasonable person who takes affirmative acts of posting information on social media has a reasonable expectation of privacy. Next slide. So what does all this mean? The key takeaway is that you want to remember that members of the public cannot be blocked from social media platforms. If you really want to keep your accounts private, then don't blur the lines by sharing city business or engaging with residents on your personal pages. You know, keep in mind that the courts have held that there's no reasonable expectation of privacy, assuming your accounts are deemed public. If you are, to the extent you are engaging with residents on your accounts, be transparent and open and assume you are on the record. If you're using social media to have these public engagements with the community, treat it as if everyone is listening. And as always, remember that the internet does not easily forget. I'll leave it at that. Let's continue. Next slide, please. So I just want to end with a couple of tips. So again, some of this sounds like a broken record, but please do not, you know, keep in mind, don't delete or hide posts that are related to official business. Do not block someone from your page because they're being critical of you or of a policy before the commission. Don't delete public comments. You know, similarly, like we really want to be very mindful about sort of scrubbing the record or deleting things that we don't like. And then be really mindful of AB 992, about those engagements with other commissioners, even simple things like likes or retweets would be considered discussion among commissioners that would lead to a Brown Act violation. And again, with the caveat that's that related to matters within the body's jurisdiction. So I always want to underscore that. Next slide. And then there's always the, you know, I just say the common sense tips, which is, you know, do pause before you post. You don't want to be easily provoked and by, you know, trolls or other people that might be especially critical. You want a model decorum, so make sure you follow the same decorum that you would display during your public meetings as if you were on the dais. You know, do engage selectively. I know different people are active on social media to different degrees, but you know, don't feel a need to weigh in on everything. And just consider, would this be permissible or wise if it were in-person communication? And you want to carry that into the online realm. And then just in general, follow city policies, practices, procedures. You know, we are here to assist. And so again, a lot of these situations end up being pretty fact-specific. So to the extent you have a question or doubts about anything, please feel free to seek guidance from staff. And if needed, they will reach out to our office. Okay, and so at this point, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Norma. This is Chair Jennings. I just have one question. When I asked Mark a little bit more about the Brown Act, my specific question was when we interact, let's say, as a member of the public, so send in public comments to city council meetings. And some have identified themselves as a member of the Here Commission, even though they're not speaking for the Here Commission. Others haven't identified themselves as such. Is that a problem if we sign a, you know, a public comment as our name and Here Commissioner? Are we allowed still to send in public comments that represent our own views and have nothing to do with commission business? That was kind of where I needed some guidance and wanted guidance for the other commissioners as well.
Yeah, so that's a really great question. To me, I would just say that absolutely, you know, that's why we brought up that free speech piece that, you know, we don't want anybody to feel that they cannot, you know, continue to be active residents, you know, of the city, you know, separate from their role as commissioners. So, so yes, I would say you can comment as residents. And if you're going to choose to comment in, you know, wearing a commissioner hat, just recognize that there's sort of those added layers of considerations. Like, so then, is that then going to become a public record that maybe wouldn't otherwise be a public record? But I don't, I wouldn't want any commissioner here to feel that they can continue to be actively engaged with broader city matters. And, and then keep in mind that when we're talking about the things that, that are the limiting factor for you as the commission and all of those qualifications have to do with matters of the body, right? So that's narrower than city matters, right? So there's still broader city matters, as you indicated, that, you know, may or may not have anything to do with commissioner business. So you're, you're wearing your resident hat.
And Norma, can I add one thing to your response?
Yes, please.
The only thing that I've recommended to commissioners in the past to add to what Norma has said is if you are going to comment at another meeting, let's say the city council meeting, it's okay for you to say, I'm, you know, Commissioner Borja from the Here Commission, but it would be best if after saying that, you say, I'm here to speak on behalf of myself as a resident and not on behalf of the Here Commission, just so that everybody is aware that it's not, that the Here Commission has sent you to speak on behalf of the Here Commission, that you are doing it, as Norma said, as a resident, not as a commissioner, so to speak. But it is okay to identify yourself as a commissioner because it does impart sort of the specialty or the, you know, the knowledge that you have as a commissioner. So it is okay to identify yourself that way.
Thank you, Mark.
Does anyone have any other questions or need clarification on any other areas? Well, thank you, Norma. We appreciate it. And as Norma mentioned, Matthew and Mark and Lucy have been very, very receptive to questions. So please email them if you need any additional, no guidance or have any other questions after tonight. Thank you, Norma.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is review and discussion of our approved 2021 annual work plan and the action plan. So our annual work plan was presented on June 15th to the city council meeting and was approved with just a couple of amendments. And I will say that the, the experience was a lot easier than I anticipated it to be. The city council members were very thoughtful in their questions. They were really, really complimentary of the work that we had done and they appreciated how much time and effort we put into it. So, you know, congratulations to that. There were only a couple of changes. And so I'm going to turn it over to Matthew to get us started.
Thank you, Chair Jennings. So like Chair Jennings said, the council
So like Chair Jennings said, the council was definitely complimentary of all the hard work and we definitely appreciate all the hard work that you've put into it. It definitely made our lives easier and we were happy to work alongside of you as we worked through the annual work plan. So now the hard work begins of trying to make it all happen. So the two items that council identified as amendments that they wanted to make were an item one, A2, which was changing the it to recommend that other city commissions, as appropriate, consider the development and implementation of a work plan. So the main item was consider. So rather than making it mandatory, that they are encouraging or asking that the other commissions consider adding the development and implementation of a work plan. The other item was in five, under accessibility, so five AI, adding a third language, which is Vietnamese. So asking for translations of city council meeting agendas into Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese. With that said, before we move on to the action plan, does anyone have any questions on those? Or anything else on the work plan?
No, I know Commissioner Borja, I think, was listening in on the meeting as well. I don't know, Commissioner Borja, you had any comments that you wanted to make?
No, I'm trying to remember. I think, yeah, I think it was just a little bit of the back and forth about the, that recommendation that others have work plans. But, you know, that's good for the consideration. I agree with.
Anyone else have any other questions or need any other information from Matthew before we begin to discuss the action plan?
No, that's okay.
Great, thanks. So Matthew did provide us with an action plan that corresponds to our work plan items. And I think he's going to make just an update to the action plan. But I would say what we are now tasked with doing is kind of prioritizing a little bit. You know, this is our annual work plan that will go through to June, well, it's our annual work plan that will end at the end of 2021. Obviously, some of these items are going to continue into 2022 and beyond. So I think for tonight, what I would ask is for us to prioritize which items we want to start on and complete for 2021 and which items we want to at least start on for 2021. And then we will need some one, I think, Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will need a commissioner to kind of take the lead on certain areas. Is that correct, Matthew?
That's, that's correct.
Matthew, did you have any other direction for us in terms of the action plan and how it's going about?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Jennings. So one item that was brought to our attention was that item two, community engagement, was accidentally omitted from the action plan. So community engagement will match exactly as it's written on the work plan. Or, so I would encourage you to reference that. And it's something that we can definitely update at the end of the meeting. And you'll notice that the format of the action plan did change slightly. It's just a little bit more formal and it includes some comments and summaries from staff. So we are encouraging you, as you're working through each of the items, that potentially an ad hoc committee may be necessary, as well as some items may be more appropriate for the commission as a whole. With the ad hoc commissions, we would encourage you to report back to the commission as a whole before action is taken. And staff are always available to guide you through the process. So just because you are operating outside of the formal commission bound, so, you know, during a normal commission meeting doesn't mean that we're not available. We're always happy to help you. Email, text, phone call, whatever it is that you need. So with that said, that is the main item that is missing. And then item data collection is listed as number one. It should be listed as number seven. So my apologies for those errors and omissions, but we will get those corrected in preparation for the next commission meeting. So with that said, I'll turn it back over to the commission and Chair Jennings to lead the discussion for the work plan, action plan.
One other piece of information from the city council meeting for us to consider is under data collection. Chief Harris was present at the city council meeting and he addressed some questions concerning the, I guess it would be seven B, gather information and analysis for traffic stops made by San Diego Police Department. So starting in January of 2022, they are going to be required to record demographic information for traffic stops. Currently, they are not required to do that. And so I think there was a question about whether or not that data would be available. So I know I'm jumping ahead here, but I would say that probably seven B would be an item that we would need to hold off on until January of 2022 or possibly later because that data doesn't seem to be available yet. We can clarify a little bit more, but I know starting in January 2022, that that type of demographic data is specifically going to be collected by police departments. So just something to consider as we start. So I guess maybe the best way to start this is if we can just take a few minutes, maybe 10 minutes for people to provide their input on what priorities or if they have one or two priorities that they would like to see us address in the next six months. We can just start with kind of an open, open discussion.
I think each of us.
And then if I, sorry, Commissioner Khan, if I may just jump in really quick. The public comment section has now closed. We did not receive any public comments for this item. So I apologize for not mentioning it earlier, but just a quick note. Sorry, Commissioner Khan.
That's all right. I think looking at this, each of us have some expertise or capabilities, I want to say. So from my capabilities point of view, I would say that engagement with the community or the community information, as it says here, as well as the partnerships. These are the two items which I feel that they are in my sort of preview, preview. So I can, I would say that these are the two items which I think we can work with as priorities.
This is Commissioner Fitzsimmons.
Commissioner Fitzsimmons, yes.
Yes, I too, in looking this over in the way of the partnerships, number two, with the community services, the resources, the San Diego Police Department and the school, these are areas that I feel that I can make a valuable contribution to.
Thank you, Commissioner Fitzsimmons.
Hi, this is Commissioner Borja and I'm looking at the youth engagement piece I can help out on. And then I will look for another also area as well. But for right now, the number three, youth.
Commissioner Brinhart, is there an area that of interest that you have in particular?
I think the community information and engagement, which would be, is that like two or three? I don't know what number it's going to be. It's not in the action plan right now, but and maybe data collection?
So when I was looking over the sheet, for me, I felt that I wanted to prioritize the equity training, the anti-racism implicit bias training, to make it a goal for us to, at the very least, have recommendations for the city of resources before the end of this year. So I was hoping that that would be one of our priorities. Community engagement, I'm very interested in. So I would like to take one of, you know, I would like that to be one of my interests and I would like before the end of the year for us to plan to have some type of acknowledgement of Native American Heritage Month. And we're going to talk about it later, but possibly to tie in the land acknowledgement presentation at the same time. So I would like to take the lead on that. And, you know, it also would be a partnership we're going to speak about later with maybe the Historical Preservation Commission. But I would like to see us complete at least that item in community engagement as well as the recommendation that we had in community engagement for presentations at our meetings. I'd really like to start that next meeting for us to maybe discuss today, if we can invite a guest to our next meeting for community engagement. So community engagement and the equity training, I would recommend or like to see us complete, not complete, but perform at least an item in those two categories before the end of 2022. Partnerships, Commissioner Khan and Commissioner Fitzsimmons have asked to kind of take the lead on those. And so I don't know if maybe for the next meeting, I guess maybe I need a little bit of help and guidance in what do we want to end up with tonight in terms of a work plan? You know, I kind of thought about some specific items I would like to see done. Do we, how detailed do we need to be by the end of tonight in terms of actual events that we want to start planning?
So I would say if there's an area that you know is going to require a large chunk of time and you are looking to develop an ad hoc committee for, if we can get that tied down today if possible, I know we're misbehaving a couple of commissioners, but if we could at least get that rolling, so the conversation could be started there, that would be fantastic. And then I agree, if we can get maybe an option one and option two for a possible guest speaker for the next meeting to get that one going, because that's a fairly easy, straightforward one to do, that would be also fantastic. The other items that look like still potentially will need someone to take on is going to be accessibility and data collection.
I know Commissioner Brinhart did mention that she was considering, I want to say take on, but had an interest in data, in the data collection portion. And then for accessibility, I guess the only reason why I'm putting that lower on, I would like, so it is our goal that it is completed by the end of 2021. But because it is also a goal of the city council, I feel like we are encouraging them along with the, we don't have to take an active role in that. At least that particular goal of having the meeting translations performed. Is that true? Or do we need to do something more active?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And as we have additional updates on it, we can always provide those as well.
So I mean, obviously, our recommendations under accessibility will be in addition to this as we go along. But for this particular goal, I hope that we can accomplish it by the end of 2021 because that's what the city council plans to do. Commissioner Borja, in terms of youth engagement, is there something that you would like to work on in particular? Or maybe information that you could bring back from the district in terms of how they choose their liaisons for the governing board?
Yes, so I can look into that as well as what schools are using the type of surveys to inquire about the needs of the students and looking to also kind of develop the needs assessment as well.
Commissioner Khan and Commissioner Brinhart, is there something within the community information section that you would like to identify to start with?
So in terms of community information, I would start out by learning what we need to do. In other words, and then basically go out and learn how to implement those. So community engagement, I think we started out by, so we'll have to define as to where our focus is in terms of engaging with the community now. I'm sure there may be much more better suggestions than I do have. So I'll just confer on somebody else to see how. I mean, I know we want to get accomplished that, but how do we do it? I'm sure there may be some, some of the suggestions coming through. So wait for it. Also, I'm sorry.
Are you interested in the community information piece or the community engagement piece or both?
No, I don't, okay. Where is community engagement? My understanding is this information only here.
Correct. So on the action plan, actually, the community engagement portion is missing. It's on the work plan, but it didn't get translated onto the, transferred onto the action plan. So it would have been the section right after the equity training number one. So it would be number two, community engagement. And that's where we listed our quote for the Native American recognition and our trainings or different types of invited speakers for our meetings. Those were two kind of specific examples that we listed. Information is just the social media piece and other information to the community.
I would be more interested in the community engagement than in community information.
Commissioner Brinhart?
Yeah, me too. That's what I was meaning. I'm sorry, but the community information part. But I was wondering on that front, because that's a lot with staff about like website updates and like social media and stuff like that. That's not really for us to do either, right? Or is it something like we would coordinate what information would be put on the website or? Do you guys?
I have a, this is Director Perez. I have a suggestion with that. It seems like community engagement might be something that the group would work on more immediately. And then the community information could almost come a little bit afterwards where you would kind of look at, okay, these are some things that we're proposing the community engage in and look at. And these are how we might be able to help translate that information to our public. So I think the idea behind the community engagement was trying to get more information, not just city-sponsored events, but other events or activities that might be, might be of interest to the general public but are within the realm of the here commission, getting that information out to the community as well. So there could, there could almost be an analysis of both of kind of, what are the things that are missing that we might want to offer or might want to provide for our community? And how do we best translate that information and get that information out? So there could be a little bit of both of those things. That's just a suggestion.
So Rebecca, would it be possible maybe to have the city's public information officer? I think, is that Adam? Maybe provide us with a brief presentation of kind of what is available right now in terms of what the social or was available from the city in terms of social media, kind of how things are posted or obtained, where they get their information from. Because just as a citizen, trying to navigate the webpage is a little bit confusing. So I don't know.
Yeah.
That's something that the other commissioners would want. That might be a presentation that we can have in terms of how the city distributes information to the public. And we can have a time to discuss with them what we would recommend or ask questions.
Sure. I think that's a great suggestion. Our public information officer is Jonathan Foo. And he, I'm sure, would be, would be happy to provide that information and/or community services staff can also work with him to kind of develop what that would look like. And and, and maybe do one of those presentations at, at a future um, commission meeting. I think that's a great idea to kind of see what, what's out there and, and so that you can have a, a good sense as to where, where you might make recommendations.
So we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, in listening to um, all of us talk, um, I see that we have equity training as part of what we need to accomplish. And the second is community engagement, the third partnership. And these are probably the top of our list. And then uh, the rest two, which is the youth engagement as well as the data collection, and it stays in the bottom of the, at the bottom of the list. So that's at least I've been, that's coming to uh, sort of coming to be those core things that we can accomplish this year.
I think Commissioner Borha was going to work on bringing us information back related to engagement. And so certainly if we could make it our goal maybe to, uh, you know, I don't know if we'll be able to develop the youth liaison um, program this year, we could work on it with the plan to develop it and, and institute the first liaisons in, you know, January of 2022. So after they come back from their winter break, but we can still begin to explore it and have Commissioner Borha bring us back some guidelines and, and help us to develop that program now. But we could make it our goal to be January of 2022 to begin our application process. I think that would sound reasonable. But yes, I agree with you that community engagement, the equity training, um,
Partnerships.
Partnerships seem to be our three top priorities for the next six months.
I do, what, what I was talking about with data collection um, was trying to put like a, that, that survey together. I'm not sure that it will get like disseminated out to everybody or, you know, whatever that would look like. But just, you know, trying to figure out what we want to ask the community about or like get more information from them about. Um, and I think also Commissioner Borha was talking about uh, the ways that uh, the youth are surveyed in the schools and stuff. And that also I feel like could, could help us come up with ideas on how to survey um, the community as well. Yes. But yeah, and uh, for the community engagement part, I also, you know, I was interested in, in trying to look for some kind of like mental health trainings, if it's um, just, not just resources, because you know, there are resources like suicide hotlines and, and other things like that. But like even past that, you know, I've just been hearing so much about how difficult it is to find therapists or, or psychiatrists or like, you know, and um, just tools that, you know, every, all of us can, can be using since um, you know, there's a lot of fallout from the pandemic. Um, a lot of us are suffering in different ways, um, mentally and emotionally. And, you know, transitioning back to not wearing a mask, being in, in social situations again. It's all, it's all difficult, you know, and I just want to try to figure out a way for people to be talking about it.
Sheriff person Jennings, this is Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Um, I have one question for Mark. Mark, will our next meeting be in person?
Thanks Sue for bringing that up. I think Matthew has that on his list of things to talk about near the end of the agenda. But if you, if you're, you're reading that answer now, so you can plan your next meeting, I think that's totally up to the commission as to whether you're going to want to meet in person. The city council will have their first in-person meeting on July the 20th. And so I think after that point, it would be appropriate for any of the commissions that want to meet in person, they can. For those that are still um, more comfortable meeting remotely, we can meet remotely, um, at least for the next several months while the state of emergency is uh, in place at the state level.
Okay. And the reason why I was asking is that I did speak to two people at the police department. One, um, Renee, Lieutenant Renee Lopez, he's a part of the gang unit. And he has a lot of information on the gangs that are in the area and also talked to the Met team. And they would be more than willing to come and speak to the commission and give a lot of information on, on any of the services that are offered, both in the schools and in the public. And they have information, they have brochures, they have already um, put together and they would be more than happy to share. So that's why I was thinking if we met in person, we could sit down with a calendar and kind of set up some dates when some people could come and speak. Are you going to only have one speaker per meeting or how is this going to work?
I think we decided, or when we spoke about it before, the decision was to try to have one speaker per meeting and limit them to 30 minutes, I think is what I saw on a previous um, work plan, just so that our meetings can still be efficient and flow. And then, you know, we would definitely try to promote and, and advertise the fact that we were going to have that speaker at, at whatever meeting to encourage people to participate in our meetings.
Yes. Yeah, because these folks, we have a little notice so that they could set aside their schedule. So because of course this will be on their own time that they would be coming and speaking at the meeting. And they're more than happy to do so. They're very excited at the opportunity to speak to everyone and uh, explains just exactly what plans have already been put in place and leave with a bunch of brochures and information so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. The wheel has already been invented and all we have to do is pick up the uh, you know, the brochures and run with them.
So if, if we use our next meeting to um, come back with information, if each of us come back with assignments um, fulfilled in a calendar as, as Commissioner Fitzsimmons um, suggested for speakers, that would give us, you know, August, September, October, November, possibly December. So five presentations um, that we can decide on in terms of just the community engagement. So I, I think that would be a good idea for that community engagement piece. If, well, there are five of us here, if people have particular um, um, speakers that they would be interested in having and are willing to go out and kind of do a little bit of research. And I wouldn't necessarily invite someone with a specific date yet, but if we can get an idea about whether or not they would be willing to participate in what kind of presentation they would make, and we can present that at our next meeting, that would be very, very helpful. So I, I certainly would like to um, invite someone in, Commissioner Fitzsimmons. If um, Commissioner Brinhart said that she's very interested in mental health and that might um, piggyback with the Met unit, that's the mental health unit that our police department uses. So, you know, we might be able to do those, those two things. And Commissioner Borha can bring us back, you know, I, I know that the school district has lots of, lots of resources in terms of presentations, or you personally, um, as a counselor, also have a lot of resources. So um, Commissioner Khan, is there, would there be a speaker or someone that you would like to bring for us to hear and?
I think before we getting speakers in place, I would like to see us round up uh, our work. Um, one of the things which Commissioner Brinhart suggested is that the, the data collection part, where it's a survey community through, so I'm sorry, I'm going back, but I'll come to your question one minute. So the survey of community through various um, city channels to determine barriers to engagement, that could very well be part of the community engagement whereby we're trying to, to find out what is needed versus what we have in terms of the services. So coming back to the speakers, um, I would, so we've got at least three, four speaker, three speakers pointed out as to mental health, the police, police department, what they're offering. And then the third thing is the uh, um, is uh, the third speaker I think just came up. So, uh, but I, I would rather have a, all of us, whatever tasks we're taking, take the tasks, do a little thorough um, analysis of what is needed, what are we, what are we going to do? And then bring in the speaker so we can learn in, in, in our research to do, to kind of like broaden our, our knowledge. So August would be a good time, even July may be a good time for a speaker if we're ready. So, so we could just kind of like summarize what we need to do and then go back and go into detail as to how we're going to accomplish the things we want to do. And then bring in the speaker relevant to what we want to do. So we, I mean, actually, we just said that we're going to need to three or four items we're going to, we're going to pursue. Even in these three, four items, we're going to still need to put one, two, three. And uh, whoever's taking those one, two, three, and then we can arrange the speakers that way to just sort of learn and be able to effectively serve.
So I guess my question is what, what role are these speakers serving? So I thought the speakers were serving more of a community education role um, as opposed to speakers who are, other than the one that I mentioned about the public information speaker, although even that's going to be education for our community. But I didn't think that this, the role of the speakers that we were inviting were necessarily to educate us on how to, you know, create the surveys or, or those types of areas that they were um, going to speak on subjects that we thought would be helpful for the community to hear about, like mental health resources or, you know, what are your rights when you're stopped by the police? We had mentioned at one point, or, you know, what does the Met unit do within the police department and how does it serve our community? Um, you know, so things that are within the scope of the here commission, but really that, that is directed outwards towards the community as opposed to directed towards the commissioners.
My understanding was, was more of our education for us, but if it's for public, I guess then we need to figure out how we're learning, how we're going to learn. We need to learn through. I'm sure there's staff there same time. Maybe other sources that we need to learn through.
Commissioner Jennings, I, I agree with you 100%. We are here for the community. We, you know, we can learn as we listen to the speakers, but we are here to provide service to the community, to educate them in every way we can. So I, I agree with you. The speakers should be people that are going to um, enhance the community engagement to the city.
Although certainly Commissioner Khan, what you suggested in terms of, of our survey as we are surveying people, certainly part of that survey would be what type of information could we present for you? Um, you know, that, that would be helpful. But I think initially, at least what one of my goals is that we hopefully can um, have some deliverables by the end of the year. So I, we only meet once a month, so I don't want to spend each meeting over planning. I feel like, as you said, we need to come up with a one, two, three tonight and begin to work on, on those items. Um, just because they will require um, information from the city staff and education, you know, from the staff and, and some planning. But if we could come up with a priority of, you know, three, as, as you've mentioned before in terms of different areas, that that's at least a good place to start and with the understanding that we're continuing to work on things along the way. And none of this just ends and starts over, you know, at the end of the year.
Okay.
That's perfect.
I think going back to um, again, what several have said and Commissioner Khan has said. So it sounds like the number one equity training, um, I, if anyone would like to work with me on that, I'm happy to work with the city staff in terms of coming up with recommendations for resources or training programs that we can provide to the city council. In the end, it's the city council that will have to decide how that information is going to be used and how they're implemented to um, to uh, provide training for the, the staff. But they did accept our recommendation that the city staff should undergo some type of implicit bias training. So we put in our, in our recommendation to them that we would, um, what do we say? As, um, that we would assist in the development of a training program. So I think that assistance would come by providing them with resources um, for them to, to evaluate. So I, I, I can work on that. And I don't know if there's anyone else who'd like to work on that? Don't feel pressured, but. And we also have two commissioners who, you know, we will also update them. And so they may be interested in working in some of these areas also. So community engagement.
I wouldn't mind also helping with the anti-bias training.
Thank you, Commissioner Brinhart. Any other comments or um, or input around number one?
Commissioner, none is, I would also uh, would like to be a part of that. I think uh, there is a certain contrition I can make hopefully.
Yes. So number two actually is the community engagement, which it sounds like almost everybody is pretty interested in, in helping with some, some aspect of community engagement, either in terms of a suggested speaker or um, a suggested speaker. So, so I, I don't, I think Commissioner Fitzsimmons mentioned at the July meeting with us coming back, if we have particular speakers in mind that we would like to present to the group to get our consensus on. So I would say at this point, we don't have anyone that we are definitely saying we're going to invite this person or this group or this subject, but we can present at the next meeting and then get a consensus or a vote on, on the speakers that we would like to invite at least, at least for the next couple of meetings. Yes, Commissioner Brinhart.
So they have to be uh, not paid though, like to come and speak to us.
So we would have to get a, because we don't have a budget, it would have to be.
That's the only thing. It's, so sometimes, you know, if you have like people who are like speaking on, on some topics, they, you know, they want to be paid for their time and their expertise. But um, yeah, so just, you know, making sure that if I'm looking for a speaker, that have to be clear that it's not going to be, yeah, we're not going to reimburse them anything.
I would say if you can have them do it without, um, with, without uh, payment, that would be a sure bet. But we can put it in our work plan, correct Mark, and present it to, you know, obviously we have some things on our, um, on our action plan, on our work plan that are going to require funds. And um, those would just have to be outlined and I guess we create a budget and it's presented to the city council and they'll either approve it or they will say no and we'll need to start over. But um, so if there's really someone that you think would be very beneficial and there's some honorarium, we can present it to city council and see what they, they say. But I would say probably trying to find people that would do it um, for free would be a better, or, or organizations or other city resources that would probably be a sure bet.
Well, we definitely want quality, I hope.
Yes. Number three, youth engagement. So Commissioner Borha is going to come back with information at the next meeting or at subsequent meetings, but starting at the next meeting with some information concerning the um, the liaison um, program as well as the needs assessment for students and anything else, Commissioner Borha? And that will be ongoing, but it'll start at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got three. There's uh, equity training, community engagement, youth, we brought in already.
And partnerships, I feel like they're going to kind of work their way in there as we are moving along, that we will need to partner with certain organizations. The other one under community engagement that again, I know I keep um, going back to it, but it, it will encompass a lot of these areas, but the Native American heritage um, um, recognition. You know, I would really like to work with city staff to bring a representative from um, the, we'll talk about this in the land acknowledgements, but to bring a representative from our local Native American tribes to, to maybe speak to us at one of the meetings or at least to be part of a subcommittee, if someone would be willing to work on a subcommittee for this Native American heritage celebration. I, I think that would be an appropriate subcommittee for us to develop. Yes, no? And there'll definitely be a partnership with community services and with the Historical Preservation um, Commission as well.
So can the partnership be a part of the community engagement in certain ways?
Oh, yes. I think there'll be a lot of overlap.
Okay.
So I don't know Matthew, have we given you bullet points or when you go back to put this together if, if, if we define.
Yeah.
Work on?
I think so. Um, so for the next meeting, um, since the commissioners will have between now and next meeting to the curriculums of speakers, um, we can either have our public information officer or someone from our staff can present kind of what cultural events are hosted in the city, how information is disseminated to residents. And, and kind of touching on those key points that are going to give some overarching information um, to help in, in almost every avenue as you, as each commissioner is kind of delving into their subsections, if you will. Um, so hopefully that would help. Um, if you all would be open to that, we'd be happy to provide um, some additional information.
Do you think we can also um, email Commissioner Goto and um, Vice Chair uh, Herrera and then see if they are interested in any of these um, categories as well? I mean, I know that we haven't really like created any ad hoc um, subcommittees, but and I don't know if that's something that we, we want to have done by the end of this meeting.
Yeah, we, we can definitely send out an email. Um, excuse me, we'll recap some of, especially for the action plan, recap some of the items um, and provide it to those uh, commissioners or, or Vice Chair Herrera. Um, and get them on board with, with where we're at, because we would definitely not want to move forward without having commissioners.
Matthew, if we have speakers that we can actually have lined up that have an agenda and have, have already um, program set up, do you want us to talk to you so that you could put that in your plan for the next meeting? Not necessarily that we're not, we're not penciling them in, but just saying that we do have people that will participate in this particular area. Do you want to know that by next meeting?
Sure, I would bring that um, work plan discussion for the next meeting, that could be, who the commission can hear those items. It, it may be possible that, you know, each commission number comes with three different speakers that are interested in, and of course, we won't have, have time to accomplish that within 2021.
Matthew, you're breaking up, or I can't hear you.
Oh.
No, you are breaking up.
Okay, so I'll repeat a little bit of what I said. Um, can we, is it clear now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, so yeah, so if we can bring all of those speakers to meeting and we can come, am I breaking up again?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, let me try something else. One moment. Okay, so I switched to a different device. I'm hoping that's clear. Excellent. So we'll, we'll compile that at the next meeting. If there's any speakers that um, commissioners think would be better at, you know, towards the beginning of the work plan or the beginning of the year, you know, closer to um, August um, versus December, then we can kind of order those and get that all lined up at the next meeting. Um, that way everyone's on the same page. But if, if you have a question where you're thinking, um, would this be an appropriate um, topic, or does it fall within the scope of the commission? Um, or the purpose of the commission, feel free to, to, to email me or um, Rebecca or Lucy with, with that question. Um, so in that way, we can kind of knock that out before we, before we get there too. So we're always open to, to that discussion as well.
Thank you.
Matthew, would you like us to send you any of that information so you can put it together for our, our next packet and people can have it before the actual meeting? So um, if we have speaker information, as Commissioner Fitzsimmons says, can we send that to you to be part of the agenda packet?
Sure, yeah, not a problem. We can definitely compile that prior to the meeting. Yeah, that might actually be a more efficient use of our time as well. So thank you, Chair Jennings.
Um, and then for the agenda, will it, I, I guess, um, just making sure that we can discuss all these things, will the agenda have um, you know, um, the number one, so the equity training, um, community engagement and youth engagement, so that we can discuss those different areas? Is that what we'll do?
Correct, correct.
Sorry, and partnerships.
Correct. So if there's um, some of the notes that, that commissioners have mentioned will also be in the action plan as well. Um, that way things don't get left behind. A lot of the items, of course, will be in the meeting minutes. Um, but you know, rather than having to force everyone to look back and forth through multiple documents, we'll try to keep it as put together as possible. With regards to um, youth engagement, um, it seems like that one may be one of the items, again, that, that's come up quite a bit. Um, so we may, that may be an item that would want to be at the, the kind of top of the discussion for the next meeting. Um, as it seems like Commissioner Borha will bring back quite a bit um, to discuss, which will, which is great, but potentially will take up a, a little bit more time. And then following that, um, we'll, we'll also, at the next meeting, we'll bring some items that other cities have done with regards to youth liaisons. So then that way there's some concrete information and resources for, for, for the commission to look at.
So Matthew, I don't know if you need to recap um, this section or if anyone has any additional comments or recommendations concerning our, our action plan.
So, yeah, I do. Now, for, in our last discussions about the youth engagement, my understanding was that we actually discussed more than one uh, way of participation, which means that we were going to pick up two, two students uh, to be part of the group. And then I think that got dropped because the school was not totally operational. And in our team, uh, the only member we have is Commissioner Borha. So I don't know if we're going to put all the responsibility on her to give us the feedback and then we kind of have only her to put all the burden on her. Instead, I would think, uh, so we, I mean, the uh, youth engagement, we need to find out what is it that we're going to be able to contribute within this timeframe, especially in the light of schools probably being, going to be out for a couple of months now. So the first item Matthew just suggested, would that be appropriate to have that as a first item?
Um, can I just, can I just add really quick too? So what I would be doing actually is for, let's say, San Gabriel Unified School District is contacting them with regards to the application for the governing board to see if that's something that we can use uh, for the youth commission appointments. Or, um, yeah, and then the others would be me just contacting the various schools, um, the private schools and the, and San Gabriel Unified School District. Uh, what type of surveys do they have that they send out to the students? And what data are they collecting? Is it something that we can use? You know, oftentimes, um, it's just related to school. Um, and then, then the needs assessment would be just looking at various, um, maybe their, their surveys or even contacting some of the colleges that develop these type of assessments that we might be able to explore. So that's what I was going to look into. So I don't think that, um, we are asking Commissioner Borha to really take on this whole um, area on her own. And for the next meeting, it's really just beginning to think about how we might um, develop a, a program and application for the youth liaison. And starting to talk about what type of assessment we would want to make. So really, our next meeting is still information gathering and Commissioner Borha has volunteered to bring back that information to us. But I see us at least specifically for this um, youth liaison person as really having the rest of this year. As we said, if we're really, if we're going to try to implement it in January after their winter break, we have the next several months to start to gather information and, and decide how we want that, that program to look.
Okay, clear.
Matthew?
Perfect, thank you. So I will just do a quick recaps and we are on the same page with regards to kind of who's taking on what. Because I, I know that the omission of item two, community engagements kind of thrown a, a, a hook in there. So my apologies, but um, so far I have um, item one, which is equity training and, and equities in city policies. We have Chair Jennings taking the lead on that um, with Commissioner Brenner and Commissioner Khan assisting with providing some information. Um, and then to be clear, our, we're not looking to um, create a an ad hoc committee for this. We're just looking to each one of those commissioners will provide some, some updates and resources to help develop that. Is that correct?
I would think so, yes.
Yes, at this, and then if the city council act wants us to, to um, be more deeply involved, then, then we can do that at their direction.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Um, item two is community engagement. Uh, I have Commissioner Khan interested and Chair Jennings, I'm also looking to be involved in this. This was an area that most all commissioners were interested in. Are we okay with those two taking the lead on that? And anyone else who's interested in providing resources can do so? Did I miss someone?
Commissioner Brenner was very interested in the mental health portion of that.
Perfect, thank you.
That's under community engagement, correct? Yes.
Correct. Okay, and then the new item three is youth, youth engagement. Uh, Commissioner Borha um, is taking the lead on that since she has the, the most expertise in that area, so she'll be providing, as she listed quite a few resources for that. So thank you, thank you. Uh, let's see, um, item now becomes four is community information. Commissioner Brenner initially prevent, uh, stated that she'd be interested in that. Commissioner Brenner, is that correct?
I meant community engagement, but I wouldn't, you know, I think that's something that I feel like we're all kind of doing when we're having, um, is it Jonathan? Come and speak to us next time. Um, and maybe we can all talk about like how best to present information.
Okay, sure. So if you'd like, I can keep it as um, an all-commission item um, until we have some additional information from the uh, public information officer and from staff with kind of what the city is already doing. And if there's an area where you see that the cities may be lacking, then we can take it from there.
I think so.
So Matthew, can we make community engagement come and all-commission item also? Um, Commissioner Fitzsimmons had a lot of, of um, input in terms of invited guests. Everybody was kind of, you know, interested in, in that also.
Absolutely. Thank you. The new five is accessibility, and I think the consensus was that we will, staff will provide updates um, as the, the um, implementation progresses. The item six is partnerships. Uh, we have Commissioner Fitzsimmons and Commissioner Khan tasked with this one. And then the last item is number seven, data collection, Commissioner Brenner. And then as a reminder, all commissioners will be coming back at the next meeting. Um, and you can feel free to email um, me any speakers that you have um, prior to that. And then um, Marilyn, is it fair to say the resources that, for example, Commissioner Brenner is bringing forth to, to the commission that those can be sent out? Would those be sent out as the agenda packet, or would they be just sent out as a separate email prior to the meeting?
What exactly would it entail? Is it just details of?
Yeah, so examples of what, you know, their commissions are doing or what the San Gabriel Unified School District is doing.
I mean, it could really just be a memo to the commissioners. I don't think it necessarily has to go to the public unless you want it to be part of the public document um, as part of an agenda item. Then that would make sense to go out as part of the packet.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I have no further comments, Chair Jennings, unless anyone has any further questions for me.
I have one question. In any of these areas, did we ask staff for resources at various times? Like Mark? Or Rebecca, or Lucy, or Matt? Because like there'll be, while we're working at it, through it, we may have a lot of things that we don't know that we can probably tap into you, any of you.
Uh, Commissioner Khan, I, I can take that real uh, quickly. Ye- yes, if there's some area of knowledge or expertise or experience that we have, we'd be more than happy to um, help the commission in any way we can. Uh, but some of this is areas that we're going to be learning with you as well. So we were looking at this commission to also be a working commission and we're all going to be in this together. But yes, if there's something that we know about or there's a member of the staff um, not on this call that we can bring in for expertise in other areas, as Commissioner Fitzsimmons mentioned, with some of our police folks as an example, or as uh, Chair Jennings uh, recommended with our PIO, we can absolutely provide that uh, city staff as a, a resource or a liaison to the commission.
Wonderful, thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? Good, I think that was good work. We have a good place, place to start. So um, thank you, Matthew. Number four, uh, agenda item number four is the land acknowledgement statement. So as um, you may remember at the end of our special um, commission meeting on May 27, I mentioned the um, idea of developing a land acknowledgement statement that we would read at the beginning of our meetings. Um, and that kind of corresponds to the historical preservation commission, which took on this topic in November of last year in terms of creating a land acknowledgement statement that would be utilized by the city. So they are farther ahead in terms of their um, development or research into, to this area. We also had a public comment at the beginning of our, that uh, May 27th meeting that just reminded us that um, there are a lot of um, considerations in terms of developing a land acknowledgement agreement, mainly um, kind of um, how we are going to acknowledge the different Native American tribes that, that are uh, still present in this area. So Matthew is going to give us some information on um, kind of where the historical preservation commission is and the research that the city staff has already done for them and kind of provide us with some guidance and where to go after this. Matthew?
Thank you, Chair Jennings. Um, excuse me. Uh, so as Chair Jennings mentioned, um, the city has um, put in some effort towards this as well. Uh, so we, we definitely want to use it as a stepping stone to, to help implement that, should that be the direction that the commission decides to go. Um, so at the November 4th, 2020, um, Historical Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, the idea of the land acknowledgement statement was brought forward. Um, staff did some research as to what a land acknowledgement statement looks like, how you should move forward with it, who you should, what groups you should speak with before implementing it. So um, there's quite a few steps uh, to be taken before the statement's actually drafted. Um, and, and it may sound um, like a lot of work for one sentence, but that one sentence can hold a lot of weight. So that's why um, so much research and time was put into that. Um, in a, in attachment A in the memo in the agenda packet um, includes the research that the um, staff or the Historical Preservation Commission put together on the November 4th commission meeting. And you'll notice it's, it's asking all those questions, so prompting you to see what groups would this be affecting? Um, what's the purpose of it? Um, what lands are we actually residing on or hosting this meeting on? So those are all the things that are, that are being called forth. Um, so with that said, and the staff doesn't know the importance of this land acknowledgement statement, um, but based off of, as Chair Jennings said, the, some of the public, public comments that were made during the last commission meeting as well as the last council meeting, um, it, it would, you know, behoove the, the commission to um, do some further outreach and um, additional research on uh, the history of the land, um, to help more. and additional research on the history of the land to help mold that statement. So some of the recommendations for outreach efforts include discussions with the Historical Preservation Commission to determine what information has been gathered with regards to the history of the land and its past and present native inhabitants and the possible formation of an ad hoc committee with members of the Historical Preservation and Here Commissions to develop a unified statement. Because as we said before, that is something that the Historical Preservation was looking to either place on their agenda or read aloud prior to the beginning of a commission meeting. So, you know, if the Here Commission is reading a different statement than that of, than that was being read at the Historical Preservation Commission, you know, that could definitely be sending conflicting messages, which isn't, of course, anyone's intention. And they are the historical experts, so just definitely things to keep in mind there. The second item is discussions with historical organizations, including the Ramona Museum of California History and the San Gabriel Historical Association. So those organizations have been around with the city for quite some time and may be able to provide a different perspective than we may have thought about. You know, we may, staff may think we're experts, but we're not experts in history by any means. So these organizations will potentially be large assets as you're moving through this. And then the last item, which may be considered that the most important, would be meeting and having discussions with the groups of persons native to San Gabriel or native to the San Gabriel Valley, including the Kish Nation, Gavroli No' Banda Mission Indians, and the Gavroli No' Tongva Indian Tribe. That's kind of going back to the public comments to kind of hash out exactly whose land we are sitting on and kind of what terminology should be included. So with that said, the staff recommends that the commission review this information and discuss possible steps moving forward. So I'll turn it back over to Chair Jennings.
Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make on that presentation or questions, Commissioner Brenha?
I'm just wondering, so so far, there were, there are no meetings or discussions that have happened between like the Historical Preservation Commission or city staff with these different groups?
In terms of the Native American groups?
Yes, is the only information that we have from them, from the public comments that we've gotten on the, at the meetings?
So specific to, are you referring to specifically the, sorry, I think Rebecca, you're muted.
Oh.
Yeah, you're muted.
Rebecca?
Still muted.
Sorry. Can you guys hear me?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
There you go. But it's still.
Sorry, I'm on multiple devices here. So our understanding is that the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission has just had that presentation from city staff, has not yet had discussions with the culture or with the Native American groups within the community. So our recommendation would be that possibly a couple of members of this commission, of the Here Commission, as well as the Historical Preservation Commission could collaborate to meet with some of those groups. And we do have contact with the, some of the key representatives of those tribal groups that we could connect you with to hold those meetings.
I don't know if this is something that our partner, the Commissioner Khan and Commissioner Fitzsimmons in terms of partnerships and working with the Historical Preservation Commission, if this would be an area that you would be interested in working with that commission to further investigate?
So I have a question. Is the Historical Preservation Commission part of the city commission or they're just independent of city?
They are city commission, another city commission.
So there's another city commission. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know enough about the Native American history and so on, but I love to listen to it and if there's anything I can do, I would love to do.
Yes, this is Fitzsimmons. Yes, this is part of, you know, the partnership, you know, as far as the historical. And I think this is something that we can look into. Rebecca, if we could get the names of those people and we can contact them and meet with them and then bring it back to the, to the commission meeting, let's see what our findings are.
So the.
Please Director Perez, again, what we can do is we can connect with the staff. So the community development staff, our planning department staff are the ones who are the liaisons for the Historical Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission. So we can connect with them as well to identify when their next meeting might be to see if they might also be interested in kind of identifying a couple of members to be a part of this, what we'll call an ad hoc committee, yeah.
Rebecca, I thought that they already had an ad hoc commission, an ad hoc committee for this that consisted of their chairperson, chairperson Lucho, I always say her name incorrectly, and one other person, I thought it had already been identified as the ad hoc committee for this land acknowledgement.
That could be, and if that's the case, then that's even better, then we can connect them with Commissioner Khan and Commissioner Fitzsimmons.
And hopefully, the plan with them is to go ahead and meet with those tribal leaders. I think it's really, you know, it would be incredibly presumptuous of us to continue this path any further without that input before input from any other sources. So hopefully, we can have our two commissioners and their two commissioners, and the city can help to set up a meeting or a couple of meetings to get their input and guidance to help us to create this land acknowledgement in the appropriate way and then bring it back to our meeting. But if that could happen sometime, you know, in the next month or two, since it has already been sitting in the other commission since November, it would be nice to move this along if we can.
Sure, exactly. So would I would talk to the planning department? Or get someone in the planning department staff?
So I will go ahead and connect with them and we will, we will connect you all by email if that works.
That's fine, that's great, thank you very much.
Great, sure.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Khan. I was just going to mention that actually the Historic Preservation Commission has their meeting tomorrow night and it's one of their items on the agenda to receive public input on this. So I think it'd be appropriate for any of you who have the time to listen to that meeting, but certainly if you have liaisons for this, it would be appropriate for the two of them to listen to that meeting and hear the discussion on that item.
Mark, do they meet in person or do they meet virtually?
That will be a virtual meeting, so the same time, same bat channel as we're on today.
Okay. So let me touch base with you tomorrow so that I can find out a little bit more info.
Mark, would it be appropriate for, can I send in a public comment just letting them know that we are also supportive of creating a land acknowledgement and would like to work with the commission? Or will you communicate that with them? I mean, would that be an appropriate public comment to send in for their meeting?
Absolutely, that would be appropriate. And we'll also communicate with planning staff so that they can talk to the commission tomorrow night about it as well.
So the question would be, would, are they appropriate committed to acknowledge that? Or we take that as a task to do? Are they better than us or in terms of knowledge?
I think the idea is to work together with them. And we're utilizing them for their resources in terms of being the Historical Preservation Commission, but and so that we're all consistent in terms of our message. But I think that they would appreciate our help and we're definitely looking to them for their guidance. So I don't think that one commission is better suited for it than the other. We both have interest in it and so we're working as a partnership. Is that correct, Mark?
As I think we talked in our earlier discussion, there's definitely a lot of back and forth between the commissions and part of your role is to create those partnerships with different commissions, both inside the city and outside the city. I think this is a great example of what your vision was when the commission was formed.
This is Director Perez. Chair Jennings had a conversation about this specifically previously as well. And I think both commissions might have a different interest in having a land acknowledgement statement, whereas the Historical Preservation Commission obviously is looking at the history. The Here Commission is looking at acknowledging all cultural identities within our community. And so I think there might be a different interest in having those and yet both have an interest. And so I think that would be a good collaboration between the two groups.
Any additional questions?
Just a quick note, as we're moving forward, there were no public comments for this agenda items. So the public comment section for this agenda item is now closed.
I'm sorry, Matthew, I misunderstood your message on how to ask about public comments, so I'm sorry.
Not a problem, not a problem.
So if there isn't any further discussion on agenda item number four, we'll move to agenda item number five, which is commissioner comments and conference meeting reports. Each commissioner may address the commission in public on matters of general information and or concern. This is also the time for commissioners to report on conferences, meetings, and or events that they have attended. Is there anyone who would like to provide a comment or any meeting conference reports?
Yes, I would actually. So I wanted to mention that I had the honor of attending a, it's not a speaker event, but listened to Father Greg Boyle. Chastity was also on this meeting. He was addressing the Delmar High School students. And if you ever have a chance to speak, listen to Father Boyle speak, absolutely do so. And he has his book on Tattoos on the Heart, but very powerful. You know, he talks a lot about just compassion. And I took some notes that I want to share with you because, you know, it really impacted me. But he was talking about how the level of compassion is actually seeing ourselves in kinship with, you know, others or with them, right? And it's about going to the marginalized, about being changed from the heart, being changed for us, right? A lot of times if we are working with marginalized, we're there to try to help. And he mentioned that that's really a selfish act. And when we are allowed to change, we're impacted by them, then, you know, that is something that is a level of that compassion. He talked about, you know, it's just receiving people and having your heart altered. But very powerful, you know, presentation. And even the students at the Delmar High School were impressed and got them thinking a lot about, you know, their lives as well. I don't know, Chastity, if you had anything to add?
No, I just, I really appreciate that Commissioner Borja invited me to this event. I had never, I heard of Father Boyle, like many of us, Father Boyle, for those who you might not know, has been involved in gay intervention in now all of Los Angeles, but I think started out more in East LA. And he is a Catholic priest and has an incredible program that's Homeboy Industries, if you haven't heard of it. So it's a really powerful gay intervention program. He would be an incredible speaker, you know, for us. In 30 minutes, he really imparted a lot of wisdom that was, as Commissioner Borja said, was really impactful and, you know, kind of heartfelt. So that's someone for us to consider. But I just agree with everything that you said and thank you for bringing, bringing that. I didn't remember to say that, so thank you for that invitation. Commissioner Brenha?
I guess I just wanted to acknowledge too, Juneteenth was three days ago. It was, it's a new national holiday. And I went to the celebration in Altadena at Charles White Park. And there was like a little freedom march and booths. And it was just, it was fun to be around people and to be able to celebrate freedom. And I also, the church that I attend, Pasadena Foursquare Church, is having a film screening this coming weekend on the 27th for the film Thorns on the Rose. And I'm not sure if anybody's heard of this film. It's a Pasadena Black Pages film. And it's specifically about police abuse in Pasadena. So it's a very local issue. And I mean, I think the film is streamable online anywhere, but the filmmakers are going to be at the screening and they're hoping to have a community discussion with people about, you know, their perspectives and how this has impacted them and any solutions, you know, that the community can come together and talk about as well. So I'm not, you know, I'm not sure how to send resources out or if that's interesting to anybody. But it's happening on the 27th.
And I think if you send it to Matthew, Matthew can send it to the group. If anyone is interested in that, would not be considered a meeting, you know, with a sharing information between ourselves. So that would be a way that you could provide that if you wanted to send it out. And thank you for mentioning Juneteenth. And I want to say that our city, if you didn't hear on the June 15 meeting, that our city council did read two proclamations. One was a proclamation acknowledging Juneteenth. And I want to thank Mark Lazarotto for being instrumental in that happening in our city council for reading that. And then they also read a proclamation acknowledging LGBTQ plus month or Pride Month, which we are in currently in June until the end of June. So those were both firsts for the city of San Gabriel. And I was able to work with the San Gabriel Library to put together a little book display for Juneteenth, also a first. So, you know, all of you, we're all making a difference and really making things happen. So thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Commissioner Khan, did you have something?
No, no, I don't.
Okay. And then one other piece of information is 211 has now a reporting system for hate crimes. And not just specific to Asian hate, but all hate crimes. But obviously, we have been concentrating a lot on hate crimes against the Asian community. But you can now report it through 211. And I was going to ask maybe at a future meeting if the city staff can find out if we can have access to any of that data that comes specifically from San Gabriel in terms of hate crimes here in San Gabriel that are being reported to 211, that that might be some, a part of our data collection for future. But I did just, actually, my daughter informed me about it because she saw it on an Instagram commercial. So it is out there and people are going to be aware of it. And I think that might be a very good way for us to collect some important data.
We can definitely reach out to the staff over at 211 LA County and see if they can provide any of those types of statistics.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitzsimmons, do you have any commissioner comments or reports?
Yes, I do. Last meeting, Commissioner Brenha had asked how many homeless people we had in the city of San Gabriel? We have six that are residents here. In and out of the city, there's probably 30 that they call transit. They do not live in the city, they just kind of float in and out. But the six homeless people that live here, they are longtime residents. And they have come up on hard times. One of them has a relative in a nursing home, so that's why he stays close by. And the six, they have been looked at and counseled by our net team and asked if they want. and asked if they want to have any permanent housing, and all six have rejected that. They are not interested in having permanent housing. They're happy to live on the streets the way they are and just to be left alone. And unfortunately, Commissioner Herrera is not here today. But he had asked, how many gangs do we have in the city of San Gabriel? There are a hundred and fifty gang members that come to our city each and every night. We have ten gangs that are active in the city. One is the Lomas, and they are active below the Ten Freeway. And then we have the Sangrias that are above the Ten Freeway, right in our local community. They, most of the gang members are generational gang members. Most of the older gang members have either passed on or they're in prison. And their younger siblings now have moved out of the city and live in the inland empire. But they come back and do their business here in the city. And these hundred and fifty gang members that are active each and every night down on this Valley Boulevard, in the tea houses, the coffee houses, there is prostitution, illegal gambling, and drugs that go on each and every night down on Valley Boulevard. Most of the gangs are Hispanic. And of course, there are some Asian gangs that are in the, they're very much in the illegal gambling. So I just kind of wanted to bring that up to let you know that that's what is happening in our city each and every night down on Valley Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that certainly reminds us that there are opportunities for our commission to make some recommendations to address those areas. And even though those six homeless people maybe are not interested in permanent housing at this point, it doesn't mean that they aren't interested in services that would hopefully make their life safer. And, you know, whatever support that we can provide, we should still continue to try to, you know, investigate. And as Commissioner Borha said, you know, gang intervention and gang prevention in terms of of our youth is certainly going to be an area that our hope, our commission can look into as we as we continue. So thank you, Commissioner Fitzsimmons. Any additional comments?
Well, on this topic, a few months ago, right next door mosque, there's a dentist, and then right past that, the rest of Dennis, there's a empty shop. We had a den there. It was operating, and I think it operated for a few months, maybe upwards of five, six months. It was, so you, people were in and out right after maybe about ten o'clock, nine, ten. And we go in and out of our building for prayers and stuff. So we noticed that, and we kept on the PD reminding them that there is something going on here. So they did come in, and I think they pursued them for almost about a couple of months. Now they're gone. They're not there anymore. So just to talk.
Chair Jennings, I had a question. So is it, you know, Chair, Commissioner Fitzsimmons had given that information. Is it appropriate that we can, I can ask for information in terms of how many have been released, you know, from from prison or from incarceration? And and the type of assistance that they're being provided? Or how many of them are able to, you know, get jobs, you know?
You, Captain, or Chief Harris actually discussed that a little bit at the last, I think, at the last city council meeting. That was part of the discussion because there, as they were discussing, District Attorney Gaston and and his special directives. So there was a lot of discussion around prison reform and and intervention and and just blanking on the word. But but those those interventions that that are available and job, you know, and retraining. So Chief Harris did discuss that some. So I I think that he is probably very knowledgeable in what we offer here in San Gabriel and would be able to provide some of that information. But the take home message was that it's too little to be as effective as it could be and that more resources need to be put into those areas was the message that I got from him.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Well, thank you, everyone. I think this was a very productive meeting. And if there are no further comments, then the here commission, the next meeting of the here commission shall be held on the fourth Tuesday of month at six thirty PM. I'm sorry. Yes.
Sorry to cut you off. You don't mind if the staff just have a few comments?
I'm sorry. I saw that and looked right at it. So I'm sorry. So our staff members should have also the opportunity to address the commission in public on matters of general information. And so this is that point in the agenda, agenda item number six for our staff comments. I'm sorry, Matthew.
No, not a problem at all. It was new. I threw one in on you. All right, so the item that I believe Commissioner Fitzsimmons brought up earlier was, will we be going in person? So we wanted to give you an update with what council has decided, and Mark has already mentioned this as well. So on the June fifteenth meeting, Mark brought forth a couple of options to the city council. Ultimately, they decided to move forward with hosting their first in-person meeting on July twentieth, twenty twenty one. So that is coming up pretty quickly. Our next commission meeting is scheduled, regular commission meeting is scheduled for July twenty seventh. So just seven days after the first council meeting, that will be hosted in person. Mark and his team have come up with some items to to help kind of keep the council safe, if you will, or prevent any potential spread of COVID. So so all of those safety measures will be taken into account. So we wanted to open that option up to the commission to decide, you know, what you feel comfortable with. And it can be as easy as, you know, no one feels comfortable with it or as easy as everyone feels comfortable with it or or a mixture of all of that. And we'd be happy to address those concerns. The in-person meeting, should you decide to move forward with it, would take place in the council chambers. Some key items to keep in mind is that your, the here commission is larger than than our other commissions. So there's currently seven seats. So there would be enough for every commissioner, but not necessarily for, you know, there to be six feet in between. So it suggests some some key items to to think about as as you're kind of contemplating that, if you will. Did anyone have questions for for staff on on this issue? Or Mark, if you had anything to add on that as well, but.
I think from the city council meeting, Matthew, that the decision was made that the public would still need to wear masks. Is that correct? Or we don't know yet?
I'll jump in on that only because the information has changed. The reason that that discussion was a little cryptic was because it was an OSHA situation, California, the the state Office of Worker Safety, whatever the acronym is. But long story short, they met last week and changed their rules. So the answer is no, there would not be a need for anybody to wear a mask.
And it's not going to be required by the city that general public or anyone wear masks?
No, we're going to have signage that says that if you come into our building without a mask, you're self-certifying that you have been vaccinated and that we recommend by CDC guidelines that if you are not vaccinated, that you wear a mask. But as of this time, we will not require the public to wear masks if they're vaccinated.
But obviously, anyone who feels more comfortable with a mask is welcome to wear a mask.
Absolutely.
One one additional thing that I'd like to add, Mark, that you had addressed with the city council was, unfortunately, we, the city does not have the ability to to do with with the technology to do both things, to, for example, have a meeting on video as well as have a meeting in person. So essentially, if if one of the commissioners was not comfortable coming in person to the meeting, they would be able to call in, but they would not be able to be on video, kind of like we are now. So it kind of needs to be a one or the other with that. And then I think the other item that, unless this has changed, Mark, the the council, obviously, the 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 city council is five members, and I believe there are going to be five seats left on the dais with the plexiglass in between them. And then the the thought was that Mark and our city attorney Keith Lumiu would actually sit in in alternate seats. So with that, we we would need to look at how the seven here commissioners would would fit in that space. But those are just some things to keep in in mind.
Thanks for for bringing that up. I think Matthew kind of mentioned that in his comment about not being able to sit six feet apart up there. So that would be something you all have to gauge in your comfort level. But according to CDC guidance, that's not necessary for vaccinated people to to be separated. And we can all be in the same room. Now, again, if you're not vaccinated, they recommend you wear a mask and that you not be in enclosed areas like that as much as possible. So it's going to be a personal decision for all of us to make.
I I would think that we have to have a motion and a vote on on this. Is that correct, Matthew?
So it's it's my understanding that a formal motion would not need to be made. We can just kind of do a a quick raise of of the hand, and we can kind of move forward that way. Just give a staff direction so we know how to prepare for the next meeting.
So maybe can we just do a show of hands in terms of a consensus for people who would feel comfortable with an in-person meeting on July twenty seventh? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, and please, if you are not comfortable, don't raise your hand. But I guess I'd be okay. I don't know.
The first one.
I I've no pressure. So it, again, we have two additional commissioners who, you know, we need to poll as well. Right now, I see three, myself, Commissioner Fitzsimmons and Commissioner Khan, Commissioner Borha.
I'm I'm a little, I'm on the fence.
I know.
Because I mean, right now, I don't see very many people unmasking. I do have two kids at home who are not vaccinated, and so that makes me a little little more nervous about it. Even though I know that as a vaccinated person, I shouldn't, you know, be infectious or whatever. But and then, you know, obviously, there's always news and like this new variant or whatever. But I mean, as of right, I think it it depends also on, you know, the infection rate in LA County, and I think.
Feel comfortable, Commissioner Brynhaugh, calling in on the phone? If we had an in-person meeting, would you be okay with?
I I would be okay with that. Is that okay for me to call in on the phone? Or because they were saying that everybody has to be there or or not?
So if they aren't able to do a a hybrid kind of video, like, you know, go-to meeting and an in-person meeting, but they are, do have the capability of allowing you to call in on the phone, you just won't have the visual is the hard part.
And is it possible to, like, make a decision closer to the date? Or I have to make the decision now if I'm comfortable with?
We're not putting it all on you.
Yeah, definitely don't want to make anyone feel uncomfortable or put you on the spot as we're all looking at you to to kind of come up with it. It's definitely an uncomfortable situation. We will reach out to the other commissioners to to gauge their their interest level in going back in person. If it turns out that the other two commissioners that are not present tonight are are adamantly not not wanting to return, which is completely understandable in person, I would suggest that we we kind of hold off for another month and then return in person in August. But if the other two commissioners do decide that, you know, they're one hundred percent comfortable and ready to return in July, I would recommend that we we, you know, we try it in August or in July, returning in person with with, you know, potentially one or two people that want to join us via phone call. It may kind of a a nice segue, especially since masks are still required for for persons that are vaccinated. So there's still some level of precautions that are being taken, and the city's definitely taking it seriously with regards to sanitizing and and partitions where, when available and things like that. So I I definitely think that the July meeting potentially could be a a good option. But but ultimately, it would be the the commission's decision. So if we're comfortable with it, I can reach back out to to everyone once I've had the conversation with the other two commissioners. And then we can take it from there, if that's okay? Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I apologize for putting everyone on the spot. I know it's it's an awkward, it's an awkward time for everyone. So so thank you for bearing with me on that topic. But did anyone have any questions on on that?
It's more of a getting used to leaving home and going up there rather than moving. I mean, this is so comfortable.
Definitely, definitely. I do not have any other additional staff comments unless any other staff have additional comments. Nope. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. So now we are on to our meeting schedule. Item number seven, the here commission shall be held on the fourth Tuesday of each month at six thirty. So our next meeting date, as Matthew said, will be July twenty seventh. With that, we adjourn tonight's meeting at eight thirty eight PM.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
You guys.